Hey folks.
Scandal.
At seven o'clock, so if Mr. Rankin, there we go. Good evening everybody, and I will call the Falkir County School Board meeting to order. And at this time, we're going to ask Mr. Rankin if he would step out and lead us in the pledge. Mr. Rankin is a veteran, and in honor of Veterans Day, we're going to ask him to lead us, and we're going to say we thank you very much for your service and for the service of all veterans.
Thank you very much. Please place a flag and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Bob.
Okay, Ms. Callahan, if you would, please take the roll and record, and we will move to the agenda adoption.
Madam Chair, I move that the school board adopt the agenda as written.
Second.
Motion and a second that the school board adopt the agenda as written. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. And we move to the special presentation. They, oh, Ms. Pollard, well, she arrived, great. Ms. Pollard will introduce a student, and tell us a little bit about this presentation.
Good evening. Every summer, a local engineer, a female engineer, recently retired now.
Oh really?
She's from the Plains area. She finances a scholarship for a young female to go to Widener University in Pennsylvania for one week for a summer engineering camp. And so, and it's usually a very competitive process. We have Mackenzie Barrett today with us. She's going to tell us what they did at the engineering academy. Linda Suter, who's the sponsor, I had expected her to be here, but she didn't make it tonight.
Maybe she'll show up.
Maybe she'll show up too.
Okay. Mackenzie, come on.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie Barrett. I'm a current sophomore at Falkir High School. I'm here today to share a wonderful opportunity that was given to me by a woman that may be in the audience. It is a scholarship to a five-day engineering camp held at Widener University. It was such a wonderful opportunity because it helped me confirm an engineering decision to pursue college. For those of you not familiar with the camp, it's a five-day overnight camp at Widener University located in West Chester, Pennsylvania. The camp introduces you to five fields of engineering: chemical, civil, electrical, biomedical, and mechanical engineering. They introduced us to these fields through many projects, discussions, group lectures, and presentations. Dr. Chris Massey and Professor Peter were with us for the entire week, leading many of the discussions and presentations. We worked in teams on projects during the day, and had lectures and presentations at night. During the first week, we were able to complete, or during the week, we were able to complete six major projects. The first project demonstrated the principles of mechanical, civil, and chemical engineering. The goal was to create the most cost-efficient concrete cylinder that could withstand 2,500 pounds. We were given the options of many different ingredients. My group came in fifth out of 15, as we were 200 pounds short of the 2,500 pound target. Our cylinder broke at 2,300 pounds. Even though, even though the pound requirement failed, the deviation to cost was still one of the best. The second project was to design a robot to complete an obstacle course. We used Legos to build the seven-inch by five-inch physical body, and we used a software program named RoboLab to maneuver the robot through, through, through the obstacle course. The robot had a battery pack that connected via USB to the computer for downloading our instruction sets. Everyone took away from this experience the trial and error key. The most amazing fact was that the technology we used was a 25-year MIT development effort from the Artificial Intelligence Lab. This project demonstrated electrical and mechanical engineering. The next project was to design and build the most cost-efficient bridge to hold 15 pounds. Using a simulation program and limited supplies of connects, we were able to do so. The program allowed us to do a simulation, including the design, operation, and cost. Our group chose to build a long X-Trust bridge modeled after the Hudson River in New York City. Our bridge was able to hold 16 pounds before collapsing to the floor. We completed the task very well. We next constructed water rockets. The goal of this project was to horizontally move the rocket the furthest amount of yards. We had many supplies to pick from. We were able to choose the amount of weight we wanted, and how to distribute the weight on the rocket. My partner and I constructed a medium-sized nose cone and filled the top of it with Play-Doh, giving it the weight we thought we needed to propel, to propel the rocket forward in a straight line. The bottles were then filled with water and put onto a water pressurizer. Once the water was pressurized to the amount of where we wanted it, we pulled the cork and watched the rocket move. My rocket came in third place, as it fell short to the two in front of it due to too much weight in the nose cone. The basic concepts we learned, and that the project demonstrated, were inertia, gravity, air resistance, Newton's laws of motion, and acceleration. The next project demonstrated how items fly, by using a wind tunnel and three differently shaped pieces of plastic: a mushroom, an inverted mushroom, and an airfoil. The airfoil shape flies because it splits air molecules into two: one air molecule going straight on the bottom, straight under the bottom of the wing, and the other air molecule going on top of the wing, over the curved section. The two molecules must arrive at the, the two air molecules arrive at the back of the wing at the same time, giving the airplane lift. The last major project was to understand the chemical side of biomedical engineering. We learned that all medication is made with different coatings that allow to dissolve in specified pH levels. For example, a medication needs to dissolve in your stomach to serve its purpose. That pill will be encoded with, that pill will be wrapped in a casing that is engineered to dissolve in an acidic solution, that being your stomach. We took three different medications, and put them each into a basic solution and a very acidic solution. We recorded which pill is dissolved in acidic solution, and which pills dissolve in the basic solution. We found that if the pill was in the wrong pH level, it will not dissolve. The major concept I learned from this camp is that it takes many different disciplines of engineering working together to accomplish any task at hand. Many engineers, each educated in different branches, must collaborate to create a final project. Personally, I enjoy the chemical and mechanical influence that come together to form biomedical engineering. At this moment, I am planning to pursue a biomedical engineer degree to become, to be used in the field of prosthetics, with the goal to help those take more steps with less pain. I would like to thank a woman that may be in the audience for my scholarship for making this possible, and giving me this wonderful opportunity. I enjoyed the camp, and would highly recommend it to any future student.
Great. Thank you. (applause) Mackenzie, how many students were there?
There's 13 kids that actually spent the whole week there, and then there was 30 more that would come just for the day part, just for the project building. And then they would go home, and we would listen to the lectures, and Dr. Chris Massey and Professor Peter.
And the 13 that were there, where are they, where were they from?
Um, they were all over the place. I was the only one from Virginia. There's a couple from Pennsylvania. My friend, actually, I just talked to her last night, is from England. Um, there was one from Connecticut. It's really all over the place.
Diverse.
There's one from California.
Oh, for goodness sakes. Well, it's great, thank you for going.
That's great.
It's great. Anybody else got any questions?
No, that's wonderful.
Well, thank you. Thanks, Ma'am. Okay. Then we will move to announcements. There will be a finance committee meeting Wednesday, November 13th, at 5:00 PM in the school administration conference room. The Mountain Vista Governing School Governing Board meeting will be held on Thursday, November 14th, at 8:00 AM in the Warren County School Board office. There will be a personnel committee meeting Friday, November 15th, at 8:00 AM in the school administration conference room, followed by a building committee meeting Friday, November 15th, at 9:00 AM in the school administration conference room. There will be a Parks and Rec Co-op meeting Tuesday, November 19th, at 6:00 PM in the Alice Jane Childs Basement Conference Room. Several school board members will attend the VSPA Annual Conference Thursday, November 21st, 2013, in Williamsburg. November's Chairman's Night is canceled. There will be a pre-budget public hearing and school board work session Monday, November 25th, at 7:00 PM in the Falcon Room at Falkir High School. There will be a Health Advisory Committee meeting Wednesday, November 4th, at 8:00 AM in the Central Complex Building.
December 4th.
December 4th, sorry, at 8:00 AM in the Central Complex Building Conference Room. There will be a Special Education Advisory Committee meeting Wednesday, December 4th, at 5:30 PM in the Central Complex Building A Conference Room. There will be a School Support Council meeting Wednesday, December 4th, at 7:00 PM in the school administration conference room. And the next school board meeting is Monday, December 9th, at 7:00 PM, and it will not be in the Warren Green Building, we will be at Falkir High School. Okay. I do not believe we have a response to Citizens Time, and we do not have anybody signed up, do we, Ms. Callahan?
No.
So we will move to reports, and let's start over here on my left, Ms. Reardon.
As usual, it's been a quiet month for me, except I can just report that the Brookside 5K that I attended, and was the race director for, to raise funds for Auburn Middle School, was a really good success. And we're just waiting for the last accounting and last final check from active.com, which was the site that was responsible for online registration. And I think that the people at Auburn Valley School are going to be extremely happy with the results of the fundraising, and we're looking forward to having another one, of course, next year, and we're going to be looking at all of the schools again, and determining, you know, who will be the recipients of the next 5K.
Okay. Thank you. It's great. Ms. Wolf.
Just, we attended the Mountain Vista Governor's School trivia contest, that was a fundraiser for the Mountain Vista Governor's School Foundation, and I just want to announce publicly that the Falkir County, one of the Falkir County teams, with Bob and Marcy Kotoff, and Ben McCartney, and Steve, Karen, and Todd Parker, and am I forgetting anybody else?
Judy Olson.
Judy Olson, and myself. First place. First place. We beat Frederick County, you know, tie off, basically. We were awesome. I just want to say. We were awesome supporters. While Ben McCartney solved, and the Parkers solved everything. Anyway, but it was great. They raised like $3,500 so far, and it was profit, and it was great. It was really fun. So they'll have one, another one next year.
Great. All righty. Mr. Gork.
I do want to congratulate Liberty High School on the Bird Bowl.
Yeah.
And it was a cold night, I think I'm still recovering from it. I was texting Dr. Jack down on.
It was football weather.
I know, but I'm like, are you in Carhartt? I'm jealous of you down there. But it was, actually, it was very moving. They pay tributes to veterans, and it was really cool to see both teams take time, pause, line up, and they were coached to do this, and congratulate and thank everybody in the stands, so I appreciate that. I also want to report, one, it's just an anecdote, but I met a woman this week whose son went through our school's early twenties, he's in his early twenties right now, and he had gone through the electrical class at Falkir High School, knew he wasn't really wanting to go to college. Got into a job, an apprenticeship, got into doing work at local government facilities around here. He's now 24 years old, fully employed, full benefits, earning close to $100,000 a year, supporting a family, growing, may go back to school to do some other business-type work. But when I talked to her, and, you know, just the look of pride in her eyes, it really told me something about some of the programs we have, and it really reinforced what we saw last month on our tour, so.
Thank you.
When we were over at Falkir here a couple of weeks ago, and visited the, the electrical department down there, I mean, they were doing a fantastic job, of course. A lot of those guys, well, not just guys, but girls and guys, I mean, they were, they were coming out of there ready to go to work as an apprentice right away. So they do a fantastic job. From the Build Committee, I could sit here and talk all night about what's going on as far as Falkir High School and everything, but a picture's worth a thousand words. For those of you all who came out to the ribbon-cutting ceremony here last weekend, it says it all. I mean, we were just very pleased with all of the favorable comments coming back from everybody. I didn't hear not one negative comment. Everybody absolutely loved it. The alumni, the alumnus coming through, teachers, everybody. Having said that, we should be, or at least VMDO should be submitting documentation very shortly for the LEEDs GO certification.
Yes, they're working on it now.
Right? Working on it right now. So we're, we're looking for it, for, for that certification to come in. I think that's all I have.
Okay, and I'll just, go ahead.
This Saturday coming, at Thompson Elementary School, there will be a fundraiser, and come out to meet the auctioneer. I guarantee you'll love it. I will be auctioneering. So come out and spend your money and support.
Yeah. I'll piggyback on what Duke was saying. I do want to thank Janice Born and her staff, and the staff over at Falkir High School for making the building look just beautiful. And, yeah, it was, it was a great day. That's all I got. Anything?
Just relative to the calendars, but since these were technically committee meetings, I'll go ahead and talk a little bit about the calendar. The calendars, the two proposed calendars are on the division website for review and for comment. I shared the two proposed calendars at the ACES and School Support Council meetings. Karen will be sending out a news release, or we've already sent out a news release and an e-notify, and working on a global connect email to go out and, again, let folks know that it's available for review and for comment. The Sport Council and the ACES group have until the 4th to gather comments from staff, from parents, et cetera, and then that, those two calendars will be coming before you on the 9th, as informational, with the hopes of approving the calendar in January. So I think folks were positive about, one of the calendars in particular with the, that contained the unbalanced and unbalanced semester, there was a lot of positive comments and feeling about that calendar.
Good.
Particularly with the ending date of the first term being before the holidays, and then second term ending at Memorial Day, so a lot of positive comments.
Good, good, good.
Great. Okay, that all you got? All righty, we move along. Ms. Kotoff, Financial Management Report.
Good evening. You have before you the report as of September 30th, three months or a quarter through the fiscal year. We're on track. If you notice from last month, I know everyone compares, you're going to see that the carryover in the asset fund did take place in September. The year-end request will be presented to the Board of Supervisors. They're going to be doing a work session on Thursday.
Okay.
And then it does require a public hearing for all the year-end requests, because it does exceed 1% of the budget. So there'll be a public hearing Thursday night on our year, well, everybody's year-end request.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And I believe Ms. Gibson is going to present the Human Resource Department report.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board, and Dr. Jack. Tonight, I'm pleased to present the Falkir County Human Resources Monthly Report. We currently have five certified vacancies, 16 classified vacancies, and tomorrow, we are having a classified job fair at Liberty High School from 3:00 to 7:00, and we're going to be specifically seeking those custodian, school nutrition, and our transportation positions. Walk-ins are welcome and encouraged, and it's a great way to fast-track that pre-employment process and get that group of candidates that we're in dire need of at this point, so.
Yeah.
Any questions? Great.
I wish you there.
I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then we move to consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I move that we, the school board approve the following: minutes of the October 15th school board meeting, and October 28th school board meeting and work session, monthly bills and payroll, personnel actions, revisions to policy 5-3.6, hours of employment/ workday, and religious exemption number 111113.1.
Second.
Motion and a second that the school board approve the following: the minutes of the October 15th school board meeting, and October 28th school board meeting and work session, monthly bills and payroll, personnel actions, revisions to policy 5-3.6, hours of employment, workday, and religious exemption 111113.1. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries. We move to information items, and Dr. Mitchell will be reporting the student achievement report.
Yes, I'm going to have someone else who can do that for us. I just want to mention to you that the Virginia Code requires that we give the public access a notification of our student achievement, and so at the time to do that is tonight. Mary Wills, our testing supervisor, is going to review the contents of the book that you have received, not every page. That's almost 300 pages. She's just going to show you how it is arranged, so that you can read it at your leisure. It's scintillating. And after she finishes that, we will invite you, if you want, we can take questions at the work session, if you have some questions about specific schools. So I'll let Mary get started, and then I have one closing remark.
Okay.
As Audrey mentioned, this is our annual report, and we have on the screen, for those who don't have the book, the table of contents, so make it easy for you to use if you want to find a school in particular, or you can just check the page, and the pages are on the bottom. And throughout the book, when it deals with any school, I've, I've made a footnote or like a footer that keeps that school's data there, so whenever you're on a page, you don't have to keep flipping back to say, what school was that? It's listed right there. So it should make it for ease of, ease of use for you to use.
Yes.
I also put in here the number of press releases that Virginia puts out, and the terminology, because as we know, each year, things change. And we work all year, and at the end of the year, they tell us what's going to count and how it's going to look. And so I wanted to make a chance to keep together what this data represents. And so those first few pages from the state go directly with the data behind it, so that you won't have to wonder, what was this? And the terminology page is very helpful, because terminologies keep changing, and you'll find it on 6, 7, you'll find the definitions that they state gave in August that applies to this data. Okay? The, if you look at the first report, which is the next page there, this you'll see is Falkir County, and I'll just walk through a quick piece on how we looked as a division, and then each school has their piece that built into this. On that first page, you'll see that with the targets, and they talk about the gap groups, and they describe who the gap groups are, and that was new last year, that Falkir County made, met all the AMOs, annual measurable objectives, for reading and for math, for the whole division. The next page talks about participation, and we needed a 95% participation in reading and math, and most of our schools had 99 to 100% participation, so that was an easy win. And then performance, with the changing AMO's targets, as a division, we met every target that was needed for reading and for math, which was quite remarkable. The students with disabilities, we met with the three-year average, which is still, they allowed us to have as a roll-in. The one area that we did not meet was found in the federal graduation indicator, and that, if you look at that next column, that would be under students with disabilities, there's a no. And one of the confusion people have is we did make the on-time graduation for the state, but we didn't make the federal graduation. And the reason for that is, the federal graduation, this, this particular data point, does not give credit for GED, IEP, or notified diplomas. Like, last year was the first year for that, and that's still standing, and that would be why you could meet it with the, with the Virginia's on-time graduation, but not make the graduation for federal. They're looking at different rules, and they give them credit for different degrees, or different types of graduation. But that was the only category we missed it in, which is pretty, pretty good, considering there are so many moving targets.
Yes.
So all of these targets are represented for each school, when you go to those pages. The next page just show you the actual data breakout by subgroups, and it gives you a three-year look of how we did. I want to remind you, when you look at English, that this particular year, 21213, is a new test. So when you're comparing those three years, you're comparing the first two with the old curriculum, and the new tests that you hear about is this one. And the notice scores are slightly deflated due to the new test. For math below it, the years 211, 12, and 21213 are actually the same test.
Right.
And the year before, that is the old test.
Right.
So that's, I hate to have you comparing apples to oranges, it's slightly different material. Again, with writing, if you look in the next page, the last, this past year was the new test, and history is, maintains itself with the established test that was three or four years ago. And then science was also this year a new test. So our schools had a lot of new things to be striving for. They had a new test in reading, they had a new test in writing, they had a new test in science, that they had to be preparing for. Plus, last, the year before is a new test in math, with the more rigor and the technology-enhanced items, and the writing test being online, and not the paper mode. So there was a lot of transitioning for our students and faculty to do, and our results are quite, quite notable. The rest of it shows you the indicator for graduation, and then it goes through, for each grade, a composite, like on page 13, of how we did with third grade reading, how we did with third grade math. So it's all broken out, if you want to look by specific grade levels. And you'll find this same report mirrored for each school. If you go to the very, near the back of the book, that's page 273, the SAT average scores, you'll see that report, and it's basically showing you how we've been doing over the years, from '87 to '88, to the current year. And you'll note our number of tests have greatly increased, to up to 500, and the scores that we have, it's almost the same as last year. Last year was, you know, 1,537, this year 1,532, but we, and we tested 66 less students in, in the way it rolled out for graduating seniors. And then the next page gives you the look of our AP tests, and the scores of 3, 4, and 5 are actually where colleges can give some qualifications of some points toward their college career, and it's considered a score that's commendable, or qualified. And so looking at the qualified scores throughout, from '98 to the current, you'll see that our number is 44% qualified, but the number of tests we give is at a record, 1,556. When you look back at 1998, 320.
Yeah.
We're really doing, a lot more students are going, having the rigor. The last page is a new report that we haven't put in before, and it's because we really haven't had a lot of students taking the ACTs. But as you'll see, that the number from 2008 to current today has increased, so now we have a little bit of data to, to talk about. The reason I understand that we are now encouraging students to take this test is because some, many colleges are looking at it, and looking at, as another way of seeing how you're doing. They look at the APs, the SATs, and the ACTs. And it's commendable that this particular year, if you look at our composite score of 22.2, is ahead of Virginia's, which is 22.4, and ahead of the US, which is 20.9. Granted, our numbers taking, we're small, but they're doing, they're doing a good job with it, and this should be a good indicator for college readiness. So that is, in a real quick walkthrough, this big book, and if you have questions about your particular schools, please feel free to either email me, and I can talk to you that way, or invite you to send questions, and I'll come back and work with you on, what is your schools, and what does this mean?
Now, is this report online?
It will be. You get it first, and now it's going online. Yes. Mm-hmm. Yes.
I just have two comments real, real quickly.
Okay.
It's, it's beyond amazing that since 2004, we've tested 458 more kids, and our score has gone up by 10% from 30, the number of kids getting a third grade on the test, it went from 34 to 44%.
That's awesome.
That's awesome. I wish I could take even just a little bit of credit for that. (laughter).
But the bar's set now.
Amazing.
It is, it's awesome.
And I want to say this, too, about this, about the annual measurable objectives, or the summary. And, you know, the, the way the system, this is me so biased, just a little bit, but the way the system is set up, it way the system is set up, the federal government and the state have created a system where it's almost inevitable and unavoidable that you're not going to make it in one of the measurable areas. I mean, that's the way the system is set up. And I just want to say this about students with disabilities not making that AMO. You know, they, those kids did exactly what they were asked to do.
Exactly what we asked them to do.
They met their IEP objectives or they met their objectives related to a modified standard diploma. Or they got their GED. They did exactly what they were asked to do. And then this shows up on this report. And I just, I think that's a shame. And I really do. And I, I want to apologize on behalf of the federal government to all those kids and those teachers because that's just another example of a system that just, it needs, it needs a revision badly.
If you want to start apologizing for the federal government, we could be here long. We're going to be here all, all week long.
Sticking to the line, yeah.
To make a more than a quality. But I agree with you, yes. It is. It's true. It is though. But for all those indicators, the fact that that's the only one, that to me is amazing.
Yeah, remarkable.
It is.
Great, great work.
So I look forward to any questions you might have regarding your schools or even the division on any of these.
We'll, we'll send them to you.
Thank you.
It's a chance to digest it here.
Thank you.
Slowly, slowly.
Mary is the test guru, right? Yes.
I just wanted to thank Mary because she does put this together quite a bit. This is going to be on the website. And Ms. Callahan has copies for the press. We want to be sure you know that because we have to make it public. And I do want to tell you that Dr. Jack is requiring of every school for their school improvement plans to address issues that they may find here. Okay? As well as classroom engagement, we're working on that too.
Thank you. Okie doke. Move to, excuse me. Ms. Kotoff, do you have your French ready?
It's a typo. It's Miss Hoover.
Okay. Because I kept looking at this call.
Did you see the look on your face? That was a question.
Wasn't it?
You're so awesome in trivia.
Yeah, I know. I kept reading, why is Marcy giving the French three quarters?
I'm happy to allow her.
Nice.
You know, it's funny, I took French in high school and the only thing that I remember is je ne sais pas, which means I don't know. And that was my, you know, favorite answer, yes.
Ms. Hoover, will you be presenting?
I will be presenting.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am presenting the recommended textbooks for adoption for French IV dual enrollment and French AP dual enrollment. As some may remember, in 2011, there was a foreign language department adoption that was for all languages. But at that time, the higher-level French teachers chose not to adopt for a variety of reasons. One of which was that the AP test was scheduled to change in 2012. So they did not want to adopt textbooks in 2011 that may not fit the new AP curriculum in 2012. There also were very low enrollment numbers in upper-level French at that time. And there weren't as many resources available. I'm pleased to inform you tonight that the enrollment in French is up 35% since that time that they did adopt for the lower levels before. And the programs are growing. We have several, or all of our French teachers have been very committed to growing the program as many school divisions all over the country are phasing out their French programs. We're excited that ours is growing. The AP test has now changed and is set, changed in 2012. And there are a lot of new resources that are available, especially online and digital resources. And it was time to, to move on. The book that they, that we have now doesn't have any digital online. It is not comparable to what we're using in the upper-level classes for Spanish and other languages. The adoption process, we tackled in three phases. The first phase, all French teachers in the school division were invited to be a part of the adoption process. We started with information gathering, as you'll see in the packet. That phase included myself, the four French teachers, three high school, all three high schools and a middle school teacher and the textbooks manager, Dorothy Rose. And we went out to find every possible resource that we could find, that we thought might be appropriate for teaching these classes. And we took those and we then requested samples of all of them. The second phase was a preliminary review. Before we began that phase, the teachers and I studied the SOLs. We studied, the VDOE has a textbook selection document for foreign language classes. We also reviewed the American Council on the Teaching of Foreign Language Standards, and they also have a textbook selection rating sheet that we all studied before we started that preliminary review. And we all came together and narrowed down the choices. At the end of that, we narrowed them down and we had a public review where the textbooks were available at the textbooks department for two weeks. And then we invited the publishers of the, the highest-rated books to come in and present. At that phase, the third phase, we invited parents and students to join us. We had a parent and two students that joined us, which was excellent because we brought in all the perspectives on, on the books.
Where was the foreign exchange student from?
Spain.
Oh.
But it was a foreign exchange student that had, was studying French in Spain.
Huh.
So she had taken four years of French in Spain. So it was a really neat perspective to have on that. And it was interesting for me that, to hear the way that they teach foreign language in Spain, similar to what we do. But after that, we did a formal, we had the publishers come in, present the textbooks, and we did a formal, actful rating scale on all of the books and made a final selection, which I would like to present for French IV. The committee selected Imaginez, which is by Vista Higher Learning. It is actually the French version of the book that Spanish is using for Spanish IV dual enrollment. And it's a really high-interest book that's arranged around themes. And they bring in award-winning French films to base the, the chapters around, and they're all built around these themes with the films. It offers extensive digital resources. Students will have the option of a digital copy of the book or a hard copy. Interestingly enough, the parent on the committee felt that having both was very important because she said that at times she felt that her children were stressed by the pressure of having to access just a digital version. So she said sometimes, when they really get to crunch time, she said she felt like they went for the hard copy over the digital version, which I found interesting. And that book is really, it just rose to the top. Even, we did a formal rating after, after the day. For French, AP French, they, the committee selected Allons au delà, which is a book published by Pearson specifically written for AP French. The book just came out for the 2012 version of the AP French exam. It, the thing that I'm most excited about, about this book, it is really written for 21st century learning. The themes really encourage cross-content, teaching language through content, interdisciplinary units. And it's very exciting to see that because it's a big jump for foreign language instruction. And then the third item that you'll see is a workbook. It's called AP French. It's a test practice workbook that the teachers feel is important for the students to have. Included in the packet is a cost estimate. I will say that with dual enrollment, we hope that the enrollment will continue to rise. The estimates are high. For example, the AP, we estimated on 36 students, which would be a class of 12 at each high school. We are not there yet. So the actual cost, at least in the beginning, will be much less, but we hope that we will get there. And we hope that we will be able to bring these books in to start teaching these courses for the spring semester.
Thank you.
And I will leave the copies of them. I can have a copy in our office and also in the textbooks department. And there is a sample lesson. There's a link in the packet. If you click it, it will take you and show you what the books look like.
Don't read French, but it's great.
It shows you how, how nice the book looks. How high interest. You'll, you'll, it might inspire, inspire you to take French. Are there any questions?
Questions, anybody?
No.
Looks good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Maybe Marcy can pick it up.
Okay, we move to action items. And we only have one, Aspirations 2015.
What are we supposed to do? There's nothing there. I move that we accept the Aspirations 2015 Year Four Action Plan as presented to us at the work session.
Second.
Motion and a second that the school board accepts the Aspirations 2015 Year Four Action Plans. Any discussion? Nope. I thought they were all very good. All righty. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. And is there anything else to come before the board tonight? If not, I'll entertain.
Move to adjourn. Second.
Motion and a second that we adjourn. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Meeting adjourned.